My pleasure, George. I have the question, please. My pleasure. I'm here to deliver the life of the United States of America. And to the collective for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do we have anybody here for public input? You guys?
No, we're here for class.
You don't speak? Okay. All right, we have amendments to the agenda? So you've got to move on, Mayor's Report? There is no Mayor's Report. You do have the October meetings in front of you. Is there any additions or corrections to that, George?
No.
So we do not have the MOCs, the Kansas City meetings, right?
No.
All right, next item, Consent Agenda A, Approval of Minutes. Which is our?
Motion to approve.
Second? Second. Call in favor?
Um, do you want to approve?
I'm just doing A.
Oh, you're doing your individual, okay. Then, no, you don't need a roll call for this one.
Okay. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I thought I said that once too. All right, B and C, we can combine those feeling?
Yes.
All right.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jerry, roll call?
Um, Kelly, yes.
Betty, yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
All right, we have no appointments. Is that correct? And we'll move on. And nothing from planning zoning as well?
No.
All right, any old business to discuss? None? All right, new business, move on to A. Electric Department, the infrared camera, consent agenda.
Yeah, I was in my general, got the opportunity to work with infrared camera to bless our, the old ones of us, and we immediately found that this was going to be a great tool for us. We not only can work through the substation looking for hot spots there, we can go out on our transformers and cutouts and creating any connection within the system. If it's overheated, we can spot that and usually it will be a misfitting or, and then it will be a misfitting, easily fixed and disaster diverted. We also feel like it would be something that would be very useful at the wastewater plant. We do mega tests annually, this would supplement those. It gives a good look at what our board and the folks are doing. And then, of course, the most important thing to us would be the safety aspect of being able to use the camera on the electrical cabinets in our 4E, which the boys were being complaining about 4E, but it's kind of snappy. Anyway, give us a chance to take a picture of the cabinet before we ever open it and we'll know if there's a problem with it. And so, boy, hard flash. We set the guys, three guys, to press and the two electricians to training for it. The training costs $100 per person, but each of those $400 was refundable on the purchase of the camera. So we're asking for a motion for Chris Davis in the amount of $3,064.91 that would include the tax. I make the motion to approve Chris Davis for $3,064.91 for the purchase of a infrared camera.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, um, Tim, did you only receive one bid?
Yeah, they're the distributor of his area. We looked at them online, they're virtually the same price, but by going through Chris Davis, we're getting the 12. We've gotten the training already, now we'll get the $12 reduction in that purchase price. So that, nobody else would touch that.
So did Chris Davis sponsor the training?
Yes, they did.
And they offer the rebate back if he purchased their camera?
Correct.
And that's okay? I mean, that's, that's fine? It's not a legal issue? No? Okay?
How does this differ from like infrared camera that maybe like fire department has?
This is much higher resolution. Like a pixel. It was like 320 by 320 or something. I thought it was actually have low resolution, as you can buy ones that attach to your cell phone. They're 640 by 480 now for about $300, but I don't think that their temperature variance is very good. This is a problem. Chris could probably speak to it better than I can as to the resolution, but this is, they, during the training, they went through several cameras, and this is the one that would allow them to look at the cabinet and get right down to the circuit, that might be a problem. It's all about the resolution. And they looked at 40,000 on the cameras, and they thought those were nice, but I mean, we didn't need something like that.
So as we cut from commodities fund, the electric departments tap from commodities and wastewater from repair parts?
I did look, just for the heck of it, and looked around, but the price is competitive. But I would definitely, next time if you want to just throw something out there from Amazon, hey, it's $3,400 for that. Okay, cool. There we go. Yeah, but this one was a lot of low price, but by the time you threw the training, which we needed, then, then nobody else would be happy for that price.
Any other questions? Jerry, roll call?
Mark?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
All right, next slide. Rock bids?
We can see a piece of rock to add to the boneyard road and to try to fix up some of the trails at the golf course. E and M had a little bid, $23 a ton, total cost of $8,050. Recommend a bid, or excuse me, a motion? Recommend E and M?
Motion to approve E and M, the bid from E and M, or $8,050.
Second. Any questions?
Are they going to dump in both places, or is it, or what is it? They're going to dump the rock in one place or to both places?
They will spread the rock for the boneyard road, and then they will dump it at the Gilson Golf Course. And we're going to assist, and public courts will assist and get it in a spread. Seems that we approved the rail for the boneyard road previously, is that this? Last December. Last December. It's because we've had so much rains here that we just need to keep it up again. This is really going to be where the fence starts on the town, and that lower portion is just a trouble spot. We'll, full spot a few other loans in here in Maryland, most of them will go in that lower portion.
I have a question. Can you add to me on the difference between the AD3 rock and the crushed concrete that they also gave an option of?
The crushed concrete is exactly what it says, it's sand and rock and slip life cement. There's no binder to it. The AD3 is a great rock, has some clay, and I can't even tell you at all, it's a mixture that actually sets up and forms an impervious shield for a lot of.
Okay, I have used it at the lake, some of this crushed concrete, and you run the risk of small pieces of metal, like from wire remish and stuff like that. I know when they run it through, there's got a magnet on the conveyor, supposed to take all of that out, but it doesn't. So I would recommend.
We actually had to use it on the boneyard road before we purchased enough to do the whole thing. And it's very good if you want to use it as a subgrade rock. It, you know, impressively, it's very good. The top course, as I said, doesn't have the binder to it, and it won't hold and wash it off.
Any other questions? Jerry, roll call?
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
All right, item C, Bobcat for Streets and Water Department?
This is the ongoing lease program we have with Bobcat Slant for the, get the new, gets there about every year, pay an annual fee of $1,200, which covers basically shipping. This year, we did budget to upgrade from the size that we were using to the size we'll also have at the wastewater plant. We found that loading trucks is a much more stable, skid steer, just all around, it's just been a better machine that we've already had wastewater, so we wanted to upgrade, we budgeted for it. Back for budgeting water because we're not going to have to pay more for the extreme duty tires. The loading truck is $300 on the upgrade from a new machine, so we came in under budget. We'd like a motion to approve the lease for $2,708.42 and that cost of tires.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the lease for $2,708.42.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? This will be paid kind of equally split between Streets and Water, is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? Jerry?
Mark?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
You should have just pulled the chair up, you're going to be.
This last one.
Okay, last one. Next item is the Bobcat for the wastewater treatment plant.
Same, same program, same skid steer, but this, we didn't have to do an upgrade, and we didn't have to pay provisional tires, so this will be for $1,200 for their base speed, and a motion to approve that lease for wastewater.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve $12,000 in the expense of Bobcat's skid steer.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a question here, on the top part, it says plus tires if need is.
We didn't have.
Okay.
They don't have, you know, the use out there on terminal concrete like we do out on the streets.
Any other questions? I think you answered my question, I was just curious about the need for two, and assuming we keep two of them busy.
We do keep two busy. This last year was probably the least we could use them because we had virtually no snow or winter. But I usually keep them real busy. And during the week, it's work season. You know, I gave them your hand there.
Any other questions? Jerry?
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
All right, the next item is 2017 health insurance, that new grant?
Yes. Currently, the health insurance provided for employees runs from December 1 through November 30. And we did that to grandfather ourselves out of the Affordable Care Act. Under that program, you're, under the Affordable Care Act, a group is rated on the age and gender demographic. Prior to that, insurance was quoted based upon group usage. We are no longer able to grandfather out, so any new insurance would actually be a 13-month program, about 12 months, would run from November 1, I'm sorry, December 1 of 2016 through December 31 of 2017. Right now, we use a third-party administrator with an umbrella coverage, and then the city has a health insurance trust that pays the amount in between. We received proposals from Coventry, our current provider for umbrella coverage, Aetna, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and United Healthcare. The change in costs of the program, Coventry would increase costs 15.7%, going with Aetna would decrease the premium cost 6.54%, Blue Cross, Blue Shield 4100%, and United Healthcare would increase annual cost by 1.84%. The Employee Health Insurance Committee was looking at these different proposals, and so the recommendation from the committee is changing the umbrella health insurance provider to Aetna, which would also increase the deductible from 65, or from 5,000, 10,000, 15,000 to 6,500, to $13,000 deductible. And for the employee contribution, and the employee contribution to the health insurance cost will remain at the 2016 insurance contribution level. So essentially, what this is asking is approve the program as it currently stands, except Aetna be the umbrella provider. This holds the cost for the health insurance program at no increase. Even though the umbrella coverage is going to fail, we're looking at higher deductibles under the umbrella coverage. Also, under the Coventry program, we had first dollar coverage on prescriptions, they didn't apply towards deductible. We also had first dollar coverage on office visits, there was a co-pay, and then first dollar coverage there. Under Aetna, there's the co-pay, but then the deductible has to be met before the dollar, or the umbrella coverage comes into being. And that is the reason the committee is recommending that the employer portion stay the same, is that what would have gone to the umbrella provider now is going to the pool to help offset the increased cost to the pool. And hopefully, ideally, if the pool continues the way it's going, we'll be able to, again, for 2018, keep costs fairly stable. So the recommendation is to approve the Aetna proposal, and its contribution levels for the employee and the employer stay the same.
Motion. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
When you refer to the umbrella, that then is the, includes the health savings account portion?
It's a health, I mean, it's a health reimbursement account, yes.
So there is some assistance with that deductible, like by what, 50/50, or?
Well, the actual program that the employees see are a $300, $600 deductible with a $1,400, $2,800 co-insurance. So total out-of-pocket for the employee is $1,700, $3,400 under the program. There's a $20 co-pay, $40 for specialists, and then prescriptions, depending on the prescription used. For generics, $3 minimum, $15 maximum. Prescription for brand formulary 30, for non-formulary brand 55. One thing when I talk about managing the program, one of the largest expenses has been prescription drugs. But from the employee's standpoint, utilization has been 98% for generic drugs under the program. So the employees understand the value of the program and have bought into it from the standpoint of helping to control costs, and it's made a big difference in the pool. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, I, thank you.
I get that discussion.
I've got to ask, back on the umbrella coverage, so we don't self-insure any of the health side, just a little? No, we fully, we fully self-insure the dental. We self-insure between the amounts of the umbrella coverage. In other words, that's a high deductible plan, and in between, what we offer the employees, and that difference in between is what we self-insure. It goes into that health insurance trust that then we pay, well, actually, we get billed by the third-party administrator who then pays the provider for that service, if it meets the terms of the policy. So do we have any say in that corridor of, in that we self-insure versus where the umbrella coverage kicks in? That makes sense, I just asked. In other words, we take more of us risk, or we have that option to take more of us risk with our self-insured portion. Well, we have the option, we actually looked at the, well, if you go to this spreadsheet here, the spreadsheet with the yellow captions, those last two columns are actually, yeah, the last three columns, one of the things that they asked, I say that Freedom Claims Management asked, is for Blue Cross and Blue Shield to give a proposal being a fully insured program, so we can do a cost comparison, to be fully insured by someone else to eliminate any risk to the city in the cost of that program compared to what we currently have, compared to what projections would be going with Coventry, and then, of course, you can still compare them to Aetna, the Blue Cross and Blue Shield high deductible, United Healthcare. And you can see that 411,000, well, just, yeah, just over 411,000 would be a fully insured program, similar to what we currently have due to the self-insured portion. Going with the X program, it was $248,000 for that premium. And we've been able, over the course of time, to manage the cost of the program such that, I think, in 2013, is the first year that we participated in a self-insured portion of the program, and during that time, when everybody's seeing double-digit rates increase annually, we're finally seeing where our rates from 2013 to 2017 are finally getting where it's kind of in the double-digit range. And we've been able to set aside in the trust fund $90,000 with the idea, the one that pays, helps pay the premium, help pay towards the employer's share of deductibles, things like that. And also, it's allowed to manage the cost of the health insurance program itself because we're not fluctuating wildly from year to year. And we did talk about, through the Employee Health Insurance Committee, that we don't know what the next removal is going to be. That's a challenge, because insurance companies are notorious for buying business for that person here. Well, they do. And we're aware of that, and one of the things we talked about is, we may be talking about for 2018, totally different programs, we may be looking at, I mean, we're, this is a health reimbursement account right now. We may be looking at health savings accounts, or offering both, or offering a high deductible plan and giving the employee so much money to help offset the cost. These are some of the things that we may be looking at in the future, and we've talked about that as a Health Insurance Committee. But we have been able to manage it to the point that we kept the volatility of the health insurance program relatively static over time.
It looks like there are 27, I'm, I'm sorry, read that. Okay, sorry. It looks like there are 27 employees participating in the insurance, is that right? Out of how many employees do we have?
30. We have three that are on their spouses.
Okay, okay, so it's almost every day?
Yes.
Well, good as for the insurance committee, because that's not a, easy task.
Any other questions?
Do we need to roll calls?
I would, yes. Jerry?
I'm getting there. Mark?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And just to give you an idea, when we were budgeting, we budgeted an 8% increase, and we were told to look for a 14% to 16% increase for 2017. Thank you.
All right, you're up for the next one as well?
Uh.
The next item, water rights lease?
You have in front of you a proposal or an agreement to lease water rights. And by leasing the water right, I'm not talking about pumping from well number eight, would actually, if approved, would have the authority to drill a new well two miles north of town for irrigation purposes. This is what's called a temporary lease, we're not actually giving or selling our water rights. We would only be allowing the use of it for a five-year term with a five-year renewable term. Really, what I'm asking this evening is not final approval of this, but more of a consensus because of whether you can agree to it or not. Because if you agree to it via consensus, it has to be sent to the Division of Water Resources, and if they don't approve of it, then this lease won't happen anyway. But they want to see some type of document in place that shows the city willing to do this. It does have some caveats in there that if, for some reason, we need to take those rights back, either due to growth, failure of our wellfields, contamination of our current wellfield, then we would be able to take those rights back. And from there, I guess I'd open it up to questions.
What, what is the advantage to us? I mean, there's a revenue stream, but what about precedent setting? That would appear to be a disadvantage to me.
You know, the really only advantage I see is revenue stream. Disadvantages of the precedent. Disadvantages, I think precedent is showing that you're willing to lease out your water rights. You know, in this particular area, the reason they approached the city about this is because it's an over-appropriated area for water rights. So no additional water rights are being issued in this area. And so, this is the only way that if anybody wants to have anything beyond a domestic well in this area, they can do it.
Could I presume that this water well would serve us any construction that might occur immediately east? Like in that area, that patch of land that we share ownership with between Bethnal and, well, Bethnal?
Potentially, yes, yes. But, Tim, how many acre-feet are available on that well?
A hundred and sixty-five are on that well.
A hundred and sixty-five or sixty-five?
A hundred and sixty-five.
One hundred and sixty-five acre-feet in there. Ask me, lease one fifty.
Who capped it at one fifty?
Yeah.
This is eight hundred gallons per minute. It says from a battery of not more than four wells. Two locators propose.
We have to divorce the well that we have here in town from what they're doing. We'll continue to serve Bethany College with the domestic water that they, that we have in agreement to serve. None of the water on that lease will come from our well, period. They will drill new wells two miles north and all the water will be pulled and used up there. Wells near Bethany Hall out there, that's a whole different matter. We were discussing trying to lease that to them, but it's complicated.
I guess I need someone to explain to me why someone that owns a water well drilling company wants to lease water from us. I just don't get that. I don't understand.
Well, in a defined territory, there's only so many water rights based upon what's in the groundwater that's available for pumping, whether it be for municipal use, industrial use, or agricultural use. Once it gets to a certain level and this particular... The appropriation of water rights is hit its maximum. Well, this particular area is actually over-appropriated so that the only way that they could get any irrigation onto this tract of ground is to either buy somebody else's rights, which we told them was a non-starter, or potentially lease. And so, in other words, if they can't get rights through a lease or purchase, it'll be dry land filled.
So then do they have to put in the infrastructure to carry the water from our well to their land?
No. They're only leasing the rights. They are not leasing the well itself. They would actually drill wells at their property to service the field.
And to further answer your first question, it's coincidental that he is a well driller. This is their family property that someone else wants to lease and put the infrastructure on. So it's actually not the same. It's because it's family farm that they want to make more use of, not because they drill a lot of soil.
So to confirm, they would... The investment would be theirs in the infrastructure. Right.
Correct.
And we would receive revenue.
Yes.
And they would tie up a hundred and fifty and a hundred and sixty available.
At that well.
Yes.
Or under that... We refer to it as not that well, under that permit.
The way we're permitted is all... We have the three wells to the southwest plus all the wells in town. And we can still take our full allotment from any combination of our seven wells. So their use of a hundred and fifty from here is not affecting our seven hundred or five hundred and twenty-five acre-feet that we have.
How much of that do we use that we have available?
About three hundred.
But if we were to say we were to have a development building in that part of the city, that along with we can build and we are still have this...
We're not appropriating that, but we want to get our water.
I've heard you say over there is we're actually in pretty good shape for showing full water. So you don't feel like this process ever is... I think the other question I would ask is I understand this is an agreement for five years, but anytime we could step in and say, "Not anymore," essentially, is that right?
With a valid reason.
With a valid reason. But are we going to have in place something where we look at it from year to year? And is that necessary?
That's ongoing with us. We're always watching that.
You're always watching.
I assume the Division of Water Resources, they would monitor this as well?
Yeah.
To, I mean, just to make sure that they're not over-pumping what we're agreeing to?
That's actually not... I don't even sound like that's not a city problem, is it?
No, I get it.
At that point, it will be assumed the owners to self-report and it will be up to the state to monitor their compliance. It's nothing to do with us once we make that lease.
Right, I understand that, but that's what I'm saying.
It would be a state function to monitor.
Yes.
Do they have someone working in that department?
Today?
Today. Fair question.
I don't know. I guess, you know, I can understand this, but I guess I'm really not in agreement to do this. Like I said, we're kind of setting a precedent here. And if, once we allow one, who's to say that somebody else comes in, somebody else, whether it's on this part of town, another part of town? I mean, it doesn't matter which one of our rights.
I don't think...
And I know we have to agree to each one as it comes to us or whatever. I understand that. But once you allow one, to me, it's a little bit more difficult to say no to somebody else.
I guess my question to that would be, is there the potential for that to happen? I don't know how.
You always have the opportunity to say no. But I don't see where that sets precedent. Everything has to have... Has to be evaluated on its own basis for that situation at that moment, that well.
Have we ever leased rights before?
I think we've never approached it before, but...
Okay, there's where it comes in about setting a precedent, in my opinion. I mean...
I feel like three thousand dollars for this is just... I don't know. I feel like it could cause more problems than it probably gonna help. That's my opinion.
What would problems be? I'm trying to get around the downside.
The downside to this is kind of like Betty was saying, precedent. Yeah, I understand. We review everything individually. There's some things that we've done that, you know, may have set a bad precedent. And I just feel like it's not worth it. It's not worth people coming back and saying, "Well, you leased water to them. We want water here." But you're not allowed to lease it now because you leased your hundred and fifty acres here. Now you don't have enough reserve and that's not fair.
But is there a difference between good precedent or bad precedent and potentially good precedent? If we just opened the door for an opportunity to, you know, our neighbors and help the city at the same time without putting us at risk?
Well, the biggest challenge in the future is going to be water. Water is going to be the number-one resource. You don't have to even pick and buying water up like oil wells because there's not any value in it. So the bad... I mean, you see in western Kansas town, it's going to move east. And the biggest battlefield in the future, in the not-too-gustant future, is going to be over water. So you need to... I mean, right now, we're in good shape. And I can tell you, the wellfield that's in southwest of town is a better quality of water than we sit on top of. If we started pumping both locations, we're looking at building a water treatment facility because you can't blend... I mean, these are two different water sources. One's out of the Smoky Hill Alubium and the other is out of the Aquastats. So to blend two different water sources, you have to treat the water. Plus, the water that sits under this community is high in iron and magnesiums. So to blend them, I mean, you're going to...
You'd have to...
To be powerful to today's consumer, you're looking at a water treatment process of some kind. But by the same time, just because the water quality may not be where you would like it to be, you can still treat it and you have those water rights.
May have more. Embellishing what he said. We really don't want this water here. We have five hundred and twenty-five acre-feet appropriated from state. And we want every drop of it to come from southwest. We don't want this water here. It's... I mean, you're all old enough to remember what it's like. It's...
I miss my white ice creams.
Yeah. Orange t-shirts. I've had a lot of discussions with Division of Water Resources over the years about just this sort of thing. Actually, I have been approached to give up once. We don't do that. But I think making beneficial use, you know, allowing a local person who lives just a mile outside of town to bring in a better crop, that's good for our local economy with water that we don't want to use. We want our water from the southwest. That's the better water. And we can get it there. We are getting it there. We can get all of it there.
So is it healthy for the ecosystem, then, for that water to be used? And see, I mean, as the water is used and goes down, does it then replenish with...
Yes, and that's why they say over-appropriated. They take the big map and they determine how much water falls on that area in a year's time. And then they appropriate half of that. And they got a little out of, overzealous and they went over that one half of recharge. You know, they allow one half of whatever falls earlier. That's how they determine. And they went a little over. But this year, you know, we're so far above, it's normal for recharge. There will always be fluctuations. But I say again, we don't want this water here.
We don't want this water today.
Not today, but for a total appropriation.
What's to say in another five years with the...
Our total appropriation can still get... Be received from out there.
Today.
Tomorrow.
But what about in three years if there's a bad drought?
And there will be a drought. You know, one year, three years, five years, we're still in good shape. We haven't grown. That's the sort of thing about it. That's why I can tell you we're in good shape. We ran all the numbers twenty years ago. We haven't grown. We still have all the money. The water that I asked for when we first went and got those wells in ninety-five.
One of the things we did was that two years ago, hired Swabe and come in to look at all of our water rights because ideally, we wanted to secure more water rights. And based upon aggressive modeling, we're still solid for twenty years and longer. When I say aggressive modeling, that's aggressive population projections.
That's five thousand by twenty-twenty. And we were out there. So if we had a big drought, wouldn't that be a reason to cancel the lease? Wouldn't that be good?
Yes, it would be. We still wouldn't want this water. We'd still get it out there.
See the headlines when you cancel a lease in the middle of the drought. I mean, that's...
Well, if it means watering people versus watering corn, yes, you do that.
What do you think about the contract ballot?
I've looked at it and we added some things to it that included the ability to terminate it if there's an unforeseen problem for the city. I don't have a particular problem with the language of the agreement. It's just a question of what do you want to do it for?
And if we decided to do it, it still has to be approved then by the Kansas Division of Water Resources. Is there any idea what their take on this is?
They're cautious. This is not a sign of... But we've been dealing with Scott Ross, who is the guy that ran Division of Water Resources for our region for most of the time that I've been here. I've got a great relationship with him and I really trust him. And he's kind of acting as agent for Petersons. But we've been, we've been up about it. You know, he thinks that Division of Water Resources will do it. You know, they originally were asking for ten years. Peterson were asking for ten years. And Scott said he did not believe that DPR would approve ten years. And we wanted five anyway, so... But he did think that they approved it, but cautious.
Back on the risk, are there the potential for five other farmers up north that immediately thought, "Oh, that's not a good idea. Let's see if we can do the same."
Well, I think this would be the limit that could be leased paid from us.
I'd pay. Least from us.
Least, you know... This, yeah, this could... Yeah, we're... We, you know, we... For the water that we have in the area that is interesting to them, this is all that we have. You know, we have wells south of there that's not close enough for them to...
So back to precedent, I guess, are there three or four farmers that have gone, "Oh, we've known we've done that, but that's all kind of..." I don't see where you're going with it.
I guess I don't see that the precedent is too much considering to approve everything that has to go, you know, whether or not to do it. Certainly set the limits. We could cancel it in case of drought or other good reasons. It's all decided to renew or not.
Are there other farmers in that area that would be interested in that? And they don't know that this is a possibility.
I can answer that. I wasn't real shocked.
They don't know they haven't approached us and we haven't... This isn't something that we went out to market. This is something that they approached us. Additionally, if this is approved, we can't afford to lease any more rights off that particular permit. Then we wouldn't be able to meet the obligations we have to Bethany College and our future potential obligation just north of there.
That was a thirty-five hundred dollar here. Don't have a good answer for you on that. Is that what they approached us with?
I'm just agreeing. It's three, not first five, and three and five for the second five.
I do believe that that was a number that Scott Ross, be right. That wasn't very market value. That's what he said it was. And actually, they originally approached us with three thousand a year for ten years. Went back and increased it for the last, for the five-year renewable term.
But then again, you said that this Scott guy is, he's negotiating for the Petersons.
Yeah, he's my one good mistake. He is now, he's a consultant.
So you... I mean, he's just saying, I know you trust him, but he's just saying that the three thousand is a fair market value. We don't have anything based on...
I don't have anything based on them. That's, I think, what Greg was asking for a consensus tonight.
I'm going to reiterate that I am not comfortable with this.
That is a good point.
Especially if we don't have anything to base this... And not that it's just down to dollars and cents, but that's a starting point for me as well as the number of acre-feet that they want to use. I guess I'm just not comfortable disagreeing.
I foresee somebody coming back and saying, "I'll go pay you five thousand for that. I have a farm right next to that. You guys have a farm." I don't know. I see bad things happening.
Well, that's like, you know, coming back and taking a little five-year renewable stuff. I don't think it is.
Sure. We're always in bad...
I'd be interested in more information, I guess. The water's there, it's not being used. If it could help somebody out. I am.
I'm in favor with the concept, but I think Greg makes a great point. We need to kind of know what the value is and if that comes back and if we have the input as to what that fair market value is, if it makes sense. That's another issue.
So at this point, Mary, you just need a consensus, correct?
I don't think he has one.
Yeah. I mean, but I think Blaine summed it up the best, at least from what I can tell. Kind of in favor of the concept. I really want to know more information as to what's a fair market value.
I agree with one. I'm not sure. Several questions kind of come up about do we offer to others? That's something you're going to have to tell me.
Well, yeah, I don't think it goes out to do we offer to others. I mean, if others came to us, and that's what happened here. Again, as we get offered to them. So I think I'd like more information on what the fair market value is for the water.
So, I think I'd like more information on what the fair market value is for the water, maybe bring it back to us or something and look at it again.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim. All right, Greg, are there any other new business we need to discuss?
I do know everything.
No executive session tonight?
No.
All right. Mark, you had a report. Community development, Mark.
Um, I thought you were talking about water, but I think a whole world. Okay, talk about over a little bit.
Maybe retention pond or.
I think it fills the pond and some park or a lot of river.
Yeah. Anyway, Mark, so we're gonna start fall planting here pretty soon, Martha's here, she's gonna plant trees tomorrow morning. We're doing a little bare root trees on the trail, on the south trail, I have a parking lot, so it's not gonna be a real dramatic thing. Although, last couple of years, we've had some really nice growth from some of these little trees that you can park them on the trail and roll out. And then we're gonna start dormant grass seeding, a little disturbed by the warm weather. Dormant seed, typically with cool season grass, you put it in in September, October, you water the heck out of it, it pops, keep the water and then you gotta stand grass. We don't have manpower, we don't have time, money, water, I said, to get that grass grown. So, what we want to do is seed a hundred, hundred and fifty pound of grass into the trail, into the parks areas that are a little sparse and just let it sit there, let it go over the winter, we don't want it to come off. And then let nature bring it out next spring and when it's time, when ground warms up and winters have a quick moisture in the air, so. That's how we do it, it's a real efficient, cost-effective way of doing it and we'll start that when it cools off.
No birds, you call them the sea?
Uh, no, not really, we use a power rake, we rake it in, there's a little bit of cover, so. You know, I don't see a lot of that. Okay, I've got to go to water now because in development, the development department, we're gonna start the outreach on the proposed stormwater utility project that we talked about in the past, I don't know if you were here, Mark, or you talked about. What it is, is funding flood control and flood maintenance with a utility that will charge a flat fee to residents and charge to non-residents a fee based on the impervious surface or what water runs off, how many square feet runs off. It's a user fee, in other words. Currently, we fund stormwater maintenance with properties, I believe it comes out of streets, correct?
Right, that's correct.
The streets department pays for all of our stormwater utility infrastructure. And it means that property owners pay for it, which means property owners overpay because exempt properties don't pay anything, even though they contribute certainly to the stormwater. This would set it up so that if you have impervious surface, whether you're a church, a school, a hospital, you're gonna pay your fair share of maintenance of the system that handles the conveyance of that stormwater. And it's an important issue for development, that's why I bring it up in the development section here, because any future residential buildup that we have in this community is either on or near flooding. Or it's in areas of shallow ponding, think of the base of the overpass at Swenson and Harrison, where the water comes up and stands and we develop there, it's gonna have a real impact on that infrastructure. We need to be smart about how that infrastructure gets designed and built. We need to have some sort of structure to monitor that and make sure that developers are doing a right. I believe, in my mind, at least, stormwater utilities is gonna provide that stable adequate source of funding. Now, it's not gonna be without controversy, there will be, and already have been, commercial interests that are concerned about the cost. And I don't blame them, I mean, it's a fair argument to have. We're gonna roll this out with the November newsletter, so depending on how many people read it, we should start seeing some feedback from the population. I talk to people and they don't know anything about it, even though we have open meetings to discuss the process. We're spending money on the setup, so, but we're moving it, so that's something to watch forward in the near term. Okay, any questions? Thanks.
So, today I was gonna thank you all on what we ended up doing with the basketball program for the upcoming season after our study session about a month ago. Just kind of to review first, what we were wanting to do was to pull out from playing with and in McPherson and basically just be a little bit in Marquette. We also wanted to kind of revamp the season overall as far as, there's kind of a huge gap in between when we start and then we all have that holiday break, which is about two, three weeks, and then go back when we finish our games. And then also, we kind of wanted to add in our itty bitty program that we do in February every year. We wanted to move that so it would be in November and kind of change it into a little bit of a skills league. And so, after our study session that we had, a colleague from Marquette and I kind of sat down, started to map out, get things figured out for it and we pretty much had once made the limitations kind of come up with it. First being when we sat down with McPherson, had a meeting with them, we basically told them we weren't gonna be sending any of our kindergarten through third grade kids over there this season because their facility at the YCA, they're thirty-four. And they were not surprised with this at all and they actually were like, yeah, we don't, we don't plan to all to do that, it all looks horrible and they actually looked at the facility themselves and were trying to figure out how they could, what they could do on there and to avoid the program, the whole thing in there. And really, all they could do would be to lease out or rent out the facility in McPherson, but unfortunately, that would mean more money in their budget than they don't have at this time. So, we won't be sending any more kindergarten through third grade kids there. And we did offer to them if they wanted to, they could send some of their teams over here to Lumsford or to Marquette for their games. And this was also a benefit to them because we did actually look at our schedules from last year and the kind of number of teams we had within each division. And then where some divisions were, if both Marquette and McPherson had, or Marquette and Lumsford pulled out, it would have left them with the three teams or so, so that wouldn't have been, you know, fair, fair to them to do that. And then we're also looking at the older kids, which is the fourth and sixth kids, and these are the kids that they play at the other schools that are around McPherson. And so, we may actually end up sending some of our kids to McPherson for that, but facilities at those schools there are not in the back, especially not when compared to the YCA they have there. But we'll kind of see how numbers work out for that with respect. And then we also were able to change up our season a little bit and I think those kind of things that have the calendar ended up working out this year. So, what we're gonna do is we'll have three weeks of games in December and then we'll have kind of a two week break for the holidays and then we'll finish up with three weeks in January and that actually also leaves us another weekend in January too, if we needed, if we have to cancel due to weather, things like that. So, I think that splits it up better before there's usually like one game and then you go on a two, three break and then finish it up and that's just too big of a break in between that. And then the other thing was with itty bitty skill program, the issue with that was we're limited on facilities. And so, by the time I put firework on, gave all our regular league kids practicing their end week and then also all their games on the weekend, there was no way we could get an itty bitty skill program in on top of that just because we're so limited. Then we were also trying to work with Bethany to get them one more to help us out in November and I just could not get them to commit. I think their basketball schedules are just too crazy and I actually even found out too that, I guess, between all the facilities we have available here, that they're getting so full over at Bethany's gym that actually some of their basketball teams are having a practice at some of the other elementary, little school, high school around here too. So, I guess it's that crazy we're on there right now. So, we're gonna skip to February for itty bitty to advance and then we're hoping they're trying to sort of handle it, try to make it into more of a skills league thing. We already get about five, thirty kids in that program every year, so it's pretty strong. And hopefully that will work out for the best, it wasn't the perfect answer we wanted, but we're worried we'll do some things that hopefully will kind of move in the right direction going forward, so.
Any other questions? Hey. Greg, administration finance?
I talked about two items, one, power supply. Well, they seem a ways off, our contract expires on eight thirty-one of twenty twenty. So, we need to start looking at options beginning in early twenty seventeen. We've already been approached by three different power suppliers. You know, when I talk about options, I'm talking about do we own our own generation? Do we do personal power agreements or combination thereof? But also, how do renewables play into our portfolio of power in the future? And we already have hydro power through the Western Area Power Administration. But as we move forward, I mean, I have a proposal on my desk right now, in a summary format, participating in a wind farm, would be a twenty-year agreement. You, at very competitive prices, pricing, steady pricing, in other words, cost of energy is, today is what the cost of energy is gonna be from twenty years from now. Which is very attractive, and do we look at community solar as a potential power supply option? And I say it's not too early to start looking because, one, there's a lot of decisions to be made in what's available. Two, part of it is not only getting contracts for power, but getting the power here. Just because we can get a contract through, let's say, Hartland Consumer Power District out of South Dakota, doesn't necessarily mean we can get it from South Dakota to here. You know, the cost of transmission could be, could make it cost prohibitive to get it here. So, you look at your power supply options, you look at your transmission options, and a study through the Southwest Power Pool, you're probably looking at a minimum twelve to fifteen months to find out whether that particular path will work for that power supply option. So, that's why we need to begin sooner rather than later. And the second item I want to talk about, I'll piggyback a little bit, real briefly on what Gary was talking about with the stormwater utility. Part of that process involves a stormwater advisory task force. What we're looking for right now is two residential representatives, and by that, I mean, some of it's not associated with a business or commercial enterprise or things like that, or not, I mean, some in, but just residential representation. And also need to follow up with four entities that were contacted to have a representative on the committee. Haven't heard back from, we're well over halfway filled, but I need to follow up with those four and the two residential representatives. And hopefully, we'll be able to start that advisory task force can start meeting in November. Originally, the schedule was October through, it was a March rate from Gary, April. So, we're probably looking more of a November to May timeframe. It is a set timeframe for this group to meet and provide input. So, if you have names for a potential residential representative, please get that to me and I will reach out to them and see if they're willing to serve.
And open any questions? Power analysis, you said a ten, twelve, but fifteen.
This was transmission.
But that's, can you do multiple?
Yes, you can do multiple at one time, yes. Yes. In fact, next year, it's forty or fifty thousand dollars we are budgeted for.
Just for us?
Yes, studies to look at different options, thank you, Betty.
Any other questions? Any other, I mean, thirteen other others? Bethany students, do you guys have any questions on any procedures you saw or anything that we did up here?
I think we're good.
Does it make you want to volunteer?
It kind of makes me more curious. Going to the old neighborhood, you know, get the fifty trees.
Well, I applaud your honesty. Is there a second for German? All those bakers say aye? Coles, same side? We're out of here.